It is now seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
All councilors are present.
If everyone could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, under item 3A this evening, we have a proclamation declaring October 14th, 2019 as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay, Vice President Anderson, also would Ryan Greendeer of the Ho'ochup Nation, please come forward with the proclamation and if Billy Bob Graham could join him up front, please, that'd be great.
We have an official proclamation and it reads, "Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day began in commemoration of 500 years of survival and renewal of Indigenous nations in the face of genocide, colonization, political, religious, and cultural oppression. And whereas, the Beloit City Council recognizes that the Indigenous peoples of this hemisphere, that would be later known as the Americas, have lived on these lands since time immemorial. And the Beloit City Council recognizes that the fact that the city of Beloit is built upon the homelands of Indigenous peoples of this region. And whereas, the city of Beloit values the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, land conservation techniques, along with deep spiritual and cultural practices that help shape the character of the land known as Beloit. And whereas, the city of Beloit will continue to support Indigenous nations' social and environmental justice, religious freedom, and tribal sovereignty efforts. And whereas, the city of Beloit honors our country's Indigenous roots and correct history and seeks with this celebration to bring greater understanding of diversity by inclusion of Indigenous peoples' culture and voice to the table in the city of Beloit. And whereas, the city of Beloit will recognize the desire of all Indigenous people representing all 567 tribal nations to celebrate the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, with special attention to Wisconsin's federally recognized tribal nations. Now therefore, the president of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim October 14th, 2019 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Beloit, presented the seventh day of October, 2019."
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Well, thank you both for being here today and thank you for your contributions to our city of Beloit and also to our state council. Thank you.
Under public hearings, under item 4A, we have consideration of resolution 2019-141 approving a planned unit development master land use plan for the property located at 511 Public Avenue.
Okay, our community development director, Julie Christensen, will explain the proposed resolution.
So Hendrix Commercial Properties LLC has applied for this planned unit development master land use plan for the mixed-use redevelopment of the vacant parcel located at 511 Public Avenue into 14 rowhouse units, a small 2,400 square foot commercial building, and an off-street parking lot. So the planned unit development process, just to remind you, is a three-step process. So the first step is the approval of the PUD master land use plan, which is the first item on your agenda. And then the second step is the actual rezoning to PUD, which is the second item on your agenda. And then the third step is actually staff review and approval of the final site plans. So this property has been vacant. This was the site of the First United Methodist Church. The church was demolished a while ago and has been used as a contractor staging area since that time. So the proposed three-story rowhouses will feature small front setbacks with buildings close to the sidewalk, rear-loaded garage, parking, and stone masonry exterior materials. Proposed one-story commercial building is located at the corner of Plaza and Public and may be subdivided into two commercial spaces. Proposed uses include retail, restaurant, or office. The proposed off-street parking area includes a gated section reserved for access to the rowhouse garages, along with a parking lot that will serve all of the applicant's nearby developments. The proposed parking lot includes one driveway on Public Avenue. They're seeking approval of the PUD in order to provide flexibility in building location and to allow more than one principal building on a zoning lot. And this, the whole point of the PUD is to allow greater flexibility in terms of meeting all of the core requirements. Plan Commission reviewed both the PUD master land use plan and the zoning on September 18th, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. The resolution for the planned unit development includes a number of conditions which are as follows. This approval authorizes the mixed-use redevelopment of the vacant parcel located at 511 Public Avenue into 14 rowhouse units, a small 2,400 square foot commercial building, and an off-street parking lot shown on the attached PUD plan. Permitted uses shall include up to 14 dwelling units, along with retail sales and service in the commercial building. The maximum building coverage shall be 20,000 square feet. The minimum building setback shall be zero, and the maximum building height shall be four stories. The commercial building may have up to two wall signs of 40 square feet each. The sign ordinance basically says that if it's a PUD, the PUD guides some signatures, so that's why we've included the signage in it. The applicant has the option of subdividing the parking lot parcel from the mixed-use parcel via two-lot certified survey map in the future. If the dwelling units are to be owner-occupied, a condominium implied is required. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain the site plan and architectural approval, which shall include a detailed review of all site grading, utility, landscape, and lighting plans. The plan shall address all the review agent's comments and concerns before approval. And then our standard condition about major changes coming back to this public process and minor changes being approved administratively. And this building has its own setback. This plan was kind of to make it fit within the downtown, so that's kind of how you see development, which I know we so often put parking lots in the front, so we're excited to see that the developer was willing to put them right on the street front and have that fit so nicely into our downtown. And then this resolution for approval, which I just listed the conditions, is on your agenda for action tonight. And the next item, the rezoning, is public hearing and first reading only.
Thank you very much, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. Final call. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Corbeck, seconded by Counselor Levy. Any discussion at this time? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that said, motion carries.
And item 4B is consideration of ordinance number 3665 amending the zoning map for the same property from our four moderate-density multifamily residential to planned unit development.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward at this time. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward at this time. Final call. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading, so is there a motion to lay this ordinance over?
So moved.
Okay. It was moved by Counselor Prushul, seconded by Counselor Jacobson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 4C is consideration of resolution 2019-142 approving a planned unit development master land use plan for the properties located at 200 West Grand Avenue and 525 Cross Street.
Community Development Director Julie Christensen will explain the proposed resolution for PUD. Hendrix Commercial Properties LLC has submitted an application for review of consideration of this master land use plan for the phased mixed-use redevelopment of the former Cary production site located at 200 West Grand Avenue and 525 Cross Street into three buildings totaling up to 174 dwelling units, limited first floor of commercial uses, and an off-street parking lot. So at one time, they were discussing adaptive reuse. That is now off the table. They're not going to remodel the original structure. They're actually hiring contractors to demolish the structure. And then they're proposing to construct... The first proposed building will include up to 54 units and is located close to the intersection of West Grand and 4th Street. It will include indoor parking, a rental office, and limited commercial uses on first floor. And then they will have the apartments above. The subject properties will need to be consolidated into one zoning lot for this project. In addition, existing sewer mains that conflict with proposed building location will need to be relocated. So you will see a development agreement in the future to address those kind of utility changes. And they're seeking approval of the PUD in order to provide flexibility in building location and to allow more than one principal building on the zoning lot. Plan Commission reviewed both the PUD plan plus the rezoning on September 18th and recommended approval. The resolution was recommended for approval, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution, which are that this approval authorizes the phased mixed-use redevelopment of the former production site located at 200 West Grand Avenue and 525 Cross Street into three buildings totaling up to 174 dwelling units, limited first floor of commercial uses, and an off-street parking lot is shown on the attached PUD plan. The permitted uses shall include up to 200 dwelling units, along with first floor uses that are permitted in the Central Business District. The maximum building coverage shall be 50% of the area of the zoning lot. The minimum building setback shall be zero, and the maximum building height shall be four stories. Each building may have up to one wall sign of 80 square feet each. Prior to the plan approval, the applicant shall administratively combine the subject properties into one parcel, a certified survey map, to clean up the legal description as recommended but not required. The final site plan shall include a fire lane disguised as a pedestrian walkway or plaza between the buildings along Broad Street as in part of the fire department. The building shall have individual street addresses to be signed by the city assessor. If any of the proposed buildings will be constructed in the floodplain, they shall be elevated in compliance with the floodplain ordinance. And prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain the site plan and architectural approval, which shall include a detailed review of all site grading, utility, landscape, and lighting plans. The plan shall address all of the review agent's comments and concerns before approval. And then our standard about any major conditions coming back to this public process, minor changes being approved administratively. And this is on your agenda for approval. And then the zoning piece, which is from CBD or Central Business District 4 to PUD planned unit development, is on your agenda for first reading only. And I just want to say that staff is really pleased to see Hendrix bringing forward two quality projects at the same time. Apparently they don't have anything else. They're just... We do appreciate that Hendrix is bringing two great projects forward at the same time. Absolutely. Thank you.
At this time, the public hearing is open. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward at this time. Final call. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Counselor Levy, a second by Counselor Corbeck. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that said, motion carries.
Item 4D is consideration of ordinance number 3666 relating to the prior item to rezone these from CBD 1, Central Business District, to PUD planned unit development.
At this time, the public hearing is open. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, come forward at this time. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. Would anyone opposed, please come forward at this time. Final call. Would anyone opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading. Is there a motion to lay this ordinance over?
So moved.
Okay. It's a first by Counselor Prushul, second by Counselor Blakely. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Regina?
Yes.
I was just going to say something.
Oh.
I was trying to get your attention.
I didn't see you. I apologize, Counselor.
I'm hiding behind the bathroom.
Okay. So we have a first and a second, so if there's any discussion, you may go ahead.
I just wanted to comment, because it's not in the minutes from the meeting that we had the Plan Commission, that the developer talked about how it was working with staff and how great staff was to be working with them, and how much help they'd been, and how much brainstorming they had done to evolve this project, both of them actually, and especially the one on Broad and Grand and stuff down there, because that's been kind of an interesting project from what I understand. But anyway, they were very complimentary staff. It was really great. They enjoyed it, and that's good to hear, and I want to put that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Prushul. Any further discussion before I move forward? Make sure I see everybody. Okay. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to get a big flag.
Consideration of resolution number 2019-143 approving the 2019 City of Beloit City of Janesville and Rock County, Wisconsin analysis of impediments to fair housing.
Okay, our community development director, Julie Christensen, will summarize the analysis of impediments.
So, we are required to do an analysis of impediments to fair housing. Every so often, as part of our community development block grant and home investment partnership, it's a requirement of HUD. In the past, the last one was done in 2012. In the past, we've done them on our own, but HUD had encouraged us to do a regional plan instead, especially since we're part of Rock County Home Consortium. So this time, we partnered with the other municipalities in Rock County to do this together, and we formed a steering committee from the different communities, representing Rock County, representing different groups within the entire county. And we worked with, we hired the Milwaukee Metropolitan Fair Housing Council, who has a lot of fair housing experience within the Milwaukee and Madison area, to help develop this document, which is a significant document. And it's, I have a statement for it. So it's discovered, and it goes through with the analysis, a demographic summary, and outlines the disparities, and does a summary of the demographic data, and some mapping, and so it's got a lot of data contained within it. And towards the end of the document, starting on page 107, they actually outlined the impediments to fair housing. Some of them don't apply to Beloit, they apply to Janesville and Rock County. But I just thought I'd walk through them real quickly. So, the first impediment is that we have an inadequate supply of affordable housing exacerbated by low vacancy rates, NIMBYism, community opposition to multifamily, and affordable housing units, racial and economically segregated housing patterns, lack of quality affordable housing, lack of consumer education for renters and homebuyers, transit limitations in Beloit, insufficient affordable housing accessible for persons with disabilities, lack of resources for fair housing outreach and enforcement, legal discrimination in the private housing market, fair housing enforcement in Beloit, Janesville, and amounts of Rock County does not include testing as a method of investigation, predatory land contracts, lack of mental health and substance abuse services, barriers to homeownership for Black and Latino residents. And then as a result, after doing the analysis of the impediments, then, starting on page 113 of the document, is a list of goals and strategies which are contained in table format. And so then each of the goals kind of outlines some general goals and strategies that we then intend to put into action. So there's some of these things that are the responsibility of city council, the city manager, the community development department, and those relate to, a lot of those relate to stuff that come through our offices and that we address and we respond to, affordable housing developments and things such as that. Then there's some goals, especially those related to fair housing, like enforcement and outreach, because EOC does some fair housing enforcement that are given to them to do. And then there's some things that are actually also there for the community development authority. And the way we're intending it to work is that these are more broad goals and strategies. And then EOC in the past has done, has come up with kind of an annual plan for themselves to come up with, to kind of address some of these goals and strategies and some of the impediments. And it's not intended to be, this is all their responsibility. It is something where that's a committee that we have, that's assigned to do fair housing, and they could take up their own initiatives, which would meet the goals and strategies contained within this plan, because it falls within their responsibility. And I do think that, you know, sometimes we've had attendance issues with EOC, but I think when that group has had things that they can undertake, activities they can do, they have really done some good things over the years that Terry has been staffed for that committee. So I'm looking forward to what that group can come up with. This is, this plan is on your agenda for action this evening.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. State your name and address, Mr. President.
Steve Holland, 1617 Neverson Street, Beloit. I was not sure to come forward at this time or later, because I wish to speak both for and against the analysis of impediments. It's a challenging report, to say the least. The substance of the report primarily focuses on the disparities that exist in Beloit and Rock County between white Latinx and African-American households. These disparities include, but are not limited to, education, employment, income and wealth, healthcare, knowledge about, and availability of financial credit, and legal services, and housing issues like percentage of homeownership and mortgage loans issued, as well as percent of minority households who experience cost burdens over 30% of income. I've been one of the, one to question if we are making any progress in addressing these disparities. If we read the 2012 analysis of impediments, or the 2004 analysis of impediments, or the 1996 analysis of impediments, it's hard not to ask, why don't we ever make any progress? Some people would say that ignores all the good things that are being done, and I want to commend us on our efforts in NARSA, the outreach that has been done on that, as well as the invitation and having X Housing come in. But there are gaps, huge gaps, in both programs that need to be addressed and identified. NARSA, Community Action, could desperately use another navigator in their staff. Their caseload is way over what they're able to do. X Housing identifies certain levels of qualifications for people to qualify for, and there are tremendous amount of people that simply wouldn't qualify. So it doesn't do anything to really completely address the disparities that exist. It's a start. I want to commend it, I want to support it, but more needs to be done. Beloit fair housing goals and strategies at the end of the report, the four columns, strategy, timeframe for action, measures of achievement, and responsible entities, needs addressing. All those things need to be looked at in terms of how we accept this report and how we implement it. Timeframe for action needs specific dates and not just 2020 to 2024. Step-by-step implementation, obviously, this is not a report that was intended to do those action steps, but those need to be done early on in terms of the whole process to make this report credible and to make it something important. Measures of achievement need hard metrics that address the disparities above. Are we achieving any kind of difference in terms of minority ownership in households? Or aren't we? If we're not making some of those, some differences in those disparities, education would be another great one to look at. Those experiencing a cost burden that is above would be another great metric. Those metrics need to be embedded, not just something that says, hold two or three counseling sessions over a five-year period to address issues of financial, understanding the finance system, you know? That won't do it. We've done some of those. And, you know, all three people that attended one of those, you know, we've never followed up on anything, and, you know, too little and unrealistic. Turns this into a joke and window dressing to receive community block grants, not a serious proposal to follow through and to make a difference. That's what I hope we do. Responsible entities needs to be looked at in a strong way. The EOC is listed as a responsible entity for 14, different line on that, sometimes with other groups. I served on the EOC for the last six years, I've chaired for the last two and a half years until last month, and I can tell you, that group does not have the capacity to be a responsible entity. We only meet six times a year, every other month. Half the time, we don't have a quorum. We've had a high turnover of individuals. So expecting that entity to be responsible without getting significant staff support. I think a dedicated staff person, ten to 20 hours a month, needs to be dedicated to seeking, to relate to the other entities, investigating problems, listening to complaints, developing trust that needs to happen to make things actually work in terms of this program. The report notes that discrimination can be subtle and sophisticated. This is especially true in the home purchase process, where discrimination may be embedded in institutional policies such as age and value restrictions in homeowners' insurance policies and credit scoring algorithms. Addressing the racism that underlies the disparities, discrepancies in this report is crucial to reducing the implementation of fair housing. We must recognize that racism is more than a Beloit problem, more than a Rock County problem, more than a Wisconsin problem, even more than a national problem. But that doesn't mean we don't or can't confront the Beloit problem. We must. That underlies this whole issue of the impediments to fair housing that I hope the council will address in a strong and serious way, and actually this time, make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your input. Now I would like to ask, would anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. And state your name and address for the record.
So, my name is Sungrose. I know Sungrose, I love you. I am now the chair of the EOC. So, I looked into this and went, hm, so this is all new to me. I don't have the experience of seeing that, and quite frankly, I'm scared of what you have. So, like, I'm not willing to give up, but this is big, and I feel like the EOC, and I know what it targets me, I know the same is going to happen. So, there's going to be support needed from the city council, from other members on the EOC. And I told Steve he has to be on call for councilation, but I agree with some of it, and I have some of the same concerns that Steve has. Like, I look back at the other ones, and it does feel like we're just putting a band-aid here and a band-aid there, and no one is really addressing it. I'm sorry, I'm always emotional when it's serious stuff. If you've ever been in a meeting with me, you'll know, I always cry. So, and it's because I care about the people who are at the bottom of this, and those are the families who are getting nowhere, who have no houses to live in because there are no rental properties, that they can't buy a house, like, nobody's listening to them, and that's how they feel. And so I listen, but as one person in the community, by myself, I can't do it. But I'm willing to try, even if it's one family at a time. And I guess the down-low or this will be a long speech.
Thank you for your input, and thank you for your service. Okay, the final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
On the record, 913 Charlotte, sorry.
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Miller. I live at 920 Park Avenue, 312, in Airfield. So, I just really briefly wanted to come as a member of the EOC and in support of Steve's comments. I just feel like I've been, I was so moved, I just wanted to comment on Terry and everybody's work at the city and all that they did for the NARSA, for the outreach that went into the sustainability plan, the five-year sustainability plan. If you ask, like, with those school board members, I've been bragging about it for months. I'm like, you need to look at these notes, and I share them around. And it's, there were such wonderful ideas and concrete lists of resources generated in those three meetings. I was lucky enough to get to all three of them. And I guess what I want to say is, we have the assets in this community to make those changes that we need to, that are identified in that impediments report. And I just want to really echo what Steve says, it's not, it's going to take a little bit more serious, like, timelining, benchmark setting, and then, you know, cross-community support, you know, with the existing community resources we have, of course, with the city, the school, to strike all of this together, because this really touches, I just obviously... the school, this, drag all of this together, because this really touches, I just, obviously, from an education standpoint, it touches our kids. We talk about, like, achievement and wanting our students to do better, wanting Beloit to look better, to try business, and all these things. We can't expect our students who come from situations where their families don't know where they're gonna live day-to-day to focus on school and to achieve and succeed. And so, I'm really encouraged by just the tremendous work that's been put into this report, and I, I just hope that we can augment it and make it more effective by really putting in this kind of pack of reasons that Steve mentioned. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone oppose, please come forward? Would anyone oppose, please come forward at this time? Final call. Would anyone oppose, please come forward? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the resolution and accept the report?
So moved.
Okay, Councilor Levy first.
Second.
Second by Councilor Corbeck. Any discussion? Councilor Prushul, go ahead.
Well, when I read this, well, over a month ago now, I, I wanted to, I was surprised there was no mention in the report of ACT Housing Initiative, or NARSA Initiative. And, you know, I was not surprised about the transit results in this report, which are troubling, and it's always been troubling. I just wanted to point out for the record tonight, that ACT Housing is not in this data set that we're looking at, in this impediments to housing. It wasn't, didn't exist at the time, it wasn't here, it wasn't, it was barely in the form of stations. It's here now, and it's making a difference, and it's gonna continue to make a difference. The NARSA Initiative was just beginning to be implemented at the time this data was collected. So again, it's not reflected in the data. It's an ongoing thing, it's new, it's an improvement over what we've done in the past, it allows us more flexibility, and it's a good thing. So when you talk about, you know, we've thrown things at things for years, and it's always the same thing over and over. Now we're doing something different, and that has started, but it's not reflected in this data, and I want everybody to understand that. And just recently, we reorganized the transit system, hoping to deliver some better service that way. And that was just last week. So, these things are happening, and we're not, we're not looking at this and going, good enough. We weren't looking at it two years ago and saying, good enough. We were saying we need to change things, and we were starting to change things three years ago. And I want you to know, and I want the public to know, that that's not reflected in this data. It will be next time, but it's not there now. So when we're adopting this, keep in mind that there are things that are not in this list, that's already being done. There's things in here that are saying goals and strategies should be applied, we're already applying, and we've been applying for over a year. And I just want that to be made very clear.
Thank you, Councilor Prushul. Councilor Blakely.
I just want to thank the members of EOC for your intensity and your commitment and your caring about these conditions in Beloit. I don't want them to know that.
There are.
It's good, okay. And I don't want you to feel alone in your efforts. I, I know that you have your, your hands and your hearts in different parts of our community, working with children, et cetera. So I just want you to know that you are not alone, and we take your concerns very seriously. And obviously, staff takes them seriously. And I too want us to push forward in the months and a couple of years here to come to get some of these things handled with more directness. So, thank you very much for your efforts. Thank you for all that you've done, Steve, and you're all there too.
Any other further discussion from councilors? Councilor Levy.
Thank you, Madam President. To, to the staff, I want to thank you for the job that you're doing with this. Truly, we're, we're making moves. It's not gonna happen overnight. The problem didn't develop overnight. So I get encouraged when I see change. And we, we're moving, maybe to some degree, we got a slow pace, but we're moving. I think years ago, maybe we could say, well, we did, and I can't guarantee it, but we did maybe put it on the shelf and look at it and say, you know what? Yeah, we'll, we'll visit that when we can. But now I think staff has committed themselves to saying, this is a report, it's telling us about our community, and we want to make it a better community. I assure you that, this report was presented to the CDA, there was a long discussion about that too. So you may feel alone, but as Councilor Blakely said, there's a lot of people involved in working on this. So there's a lot of people behind the scenes that you may not see working on it. And as a council, we're dedicated to making sure that we move the city forward in a positive way. So when I read the report, I too was alarmed. And it's something you don't want to read, but I think the only way to move the city forward is you gotta pull the cover off, and, and sleep, and, and sleep when it needs a rug, and say, here's what we found. You know, pull the rug back and say, here's what we found, now let's deal with it. So credit to the staff, everyone who's involved, who's willing to take a hard look at it, and say, okay, here's our real picture. Now we know what we have to do, what we're working with, and see those strides. But I'm gonna challenge staff as well, to when we have successes, don't just keep those hidden, because that's the only way the public is gonna know that we're moving forward. And I think, I've said this before to all our staff, we do great things for the city managers, office, city attorneys, office, city clerks, office, fire department, but we don't tell our story. So all we hear, or the public hear, is the things that we're still working on. So I'm gonna challenge the staff, as we accomplish things in this plan, to make sure the public is aware of it, so that they know that we are making strides. So I think it's a community effort. I've gotten a lot of phone calls from people when we talk about it, saying, how can we be involved? They've been in contact with Terry, they've been in contact with Julie. So we got a group of people that's calling, saying, how can we move this forward? It's not gonna be pretty, but what we have to do is have to have an honest conversation. We gotta have an honest conversation. That's the only way we're gonna move this forward. We cannot be passive and say, well, no, that doesn't exist. If it exists, let's say it. And one of the things that brought them at CDA was, you know, the discrimination in rail. You know, some places want two months rent, but the people can't afford that. So we challenge staff, say, what can we do about this? So the challenges are there, the staff is willing to do it, but I think we're all in this together, so I don't think you're scared. I think you're just concerned. You know, I think, I think, I think you're concerned. I, I don't think you're scared, because if you're scared, you wouldn't still be on the committee. Anytime you take, anytime you step into that unknown territory, it's a little, I don't know, but that assures you that you're gonna do the best job that you can, because you strike as a person that's not gonna fail. And that's what we need. So those are my comments.
Thanks, Mary. Any other further discussion? I just want to say thank you to the citizens that came forward tonight to give your input, much appreciated. And I think, just to close on a note, like, I think someone said that working together, we can make progress. Just wanted to say that. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Would that say a motion carries? Okay, so, public comments. Okay, we have a long meeting, if there is anyone that would like to leave at this time, you certainly can't miss that. We've reached a point in our agenda where we have public comments. We've reached a point in the agenda, yes?
Public comment?
Just a moment, forget. Um, we've reached the point in the agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us, or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer speakers to staff or assistants. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less, and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a privilege, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form and turn it in prior to our meeting. Each individual will be invited to the podium and asked to state your name and address for the record. Our first speaker tonight is Albert, Albert Urbanic. Can you come forward and state your name and address for the record?
Albert Urbanic.
Urbanic.
Five oh eight Island Avenue. My concern is exactly this, what I'd like to speak about is the proposed, proposed Snapper Stadium, and, and the location that I saw published in the Beloit Daily News. My concerns are several in this. One, the, it seems in the rendering that Mill Street is done away with. The street going from Sterling past the post office into Broad Fourth, Fourth Street, wherever, wherever that is at the time. I believe it's called Mill Street.
Water Street.
That is one of my concerns. The other concern I have is the wildlife in the area. Now, I know we would all like to see these ducks and geese go south for the winter, but I've been here at Beloit for, uh, sixteen years, and I, they show no intent on going south for the winter. Consequently, we have that problem. We also have eagles every now and then that come, bald eagles that come in residence along the shoreline, which the Beloit Daily News is happy to publish photos of them. And the other concern I have is parking space there. There is not that much, if you're gonna do a, a baseball stadium there, where are the people going to park? In my thoughts, a better place for this stadium would be closer to what the Hochup Nation is wanting to do for their casino. Understandably, and I believe that there would be a hotel involved with this, which would give visitors, even the teams, hotel accommodations, may even bring some business into the casino, may even bring, obviously, we're gonna have restaurants there also. That is my.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, next citizen, Scott Remington?
Good evening.
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly. Scott Remington, one twenty-five East Intendencia Street, Pensacola, Florida. I'm a long way from home tonight, but I appreciate the warm welcome and the cool weather here in Beloit. Bring you greetings from the Western Gate of the Sunshine State. The apologies of Quentin Rishi Stuter. I'm a board member of the Pensacola Blue Wahoos, their double-A team in Pensacola, and serve as general counsel of the team. The students wanted to be here tonight, because I know you're gonna discuss an assignment of leisure to the Snappers, and were unable to be here. So I'm here to just introduce myself to thank you for your cooperation, particularly staff's cooperation and assistance so far, answer any questions you have, and just tell you once again, I appreciate the opportunity and the invitation to part of Beloit. Mr. Urbank, I, I just want to say, I appreciate your comments, I took notes, and I will pass all those along. The river is certainly one of the reasons this stadium is so attractive in the downtown area in Pensacola. When we built the stadium on our waterfront, we had to take into account things like the environment, went to close some things, but it's been an absolute boon for our downtown. Taxable values of real estate have really gone through the roof. It's been really special for our downtown, and so we, we hope to see a repeat of that here. Nevertheless, I appreciate your concerns, and we'll share those with the Hendricks Group and with the students. With that, I'll just say thank you very much.
Thank you. And welcome to Beloit.
Thank you. You can leave if you're admitted in Florida next time.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? Okay, you may come forward. Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Steve Holland, sixteen seventeen Neverson Street. I wish to commend the council, city staff, and others on all kinds of things. I, I don't mean to sound as negative as sometimes I do. I, one of my great frustrations is that I think you're all overworked and underfunded, you know, from the police and fire on. You know, I just appreciate everybody's work and attempting to do that. Secondly, I'd like to commend the, the council for passing the proclamation declaring October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, as indigenous people say. Appreciate that. I hope that the school district will pick up on that as well and seek to address it on a broader educational issue, as well as other entities within the city. And I hope that it'll be a, an annual recognition and proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak, who can come forward? Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Jim Cronin, seventeen nineteen Neverson Street, Lloyd. Neverson Street seems to be very well represented here. I was going through the, the capital improvement budget, it's six hundred pages, so I didn't, didn't read the whole thing. Thank you for spending all your time as being on the city council. But going through that, looking in the parks, in recs department, I didn't see a lot for the Telfer Park, primarily the, well, I wanna say Ice Rink, it is much more than Ice Rink, it's a pavilion. My family has used that pavilion year-round, not only in the winter for, for ice hockey, but even in the summer for, had two graduation parks there. It's a, it's a great facility. And I know, you know, Beloit Hockey has come to, to members of the administration, proposing an idea to, to partner, invest into that facility, you know, with their own money to, to enhance that facility, and maybe not just so much, you know, as a hockey rink, but a year-round type sports facility, possibly with, you know, the long-term idea of indoor soccer, indoor lacrosse. My, my daughter and son play lacrosse, and they don't play anymore, and my daughter doesn't play, because we have to go to Middleton to play. But I think that opens up the, you know, everybody thinks, well, it's just a hockey rink. It opens up so many more avenues of, of people throughout the entire city that they can, they can use that facility year-round, instead of just, you know, over, over a few months out of the year. So, I'd like for, let's say, if that comes back to you, consider that, if you're looking at any sort of improvement to that facility. I know there's, well, again, private, private money out there looking that could probably burden the city, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? If there are no other public comments, we will go on to item six, the consent agenda.
There are only three items on the consent agenda this evening, and it will be taken by one motion unless a councilor wishes to remove an item, which will be taken up at this point on the agenda.
Thank you. Would any councilor like anything removed from the consent agenda? The consent agenda consists of items six A through six C. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I can move.
Okay. First by Councilor Corbeck, second by Councilor Prushul. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would that say a motion carries?
Item seven A is consideration of resolution twenty nineteen one thirty-eight, approving applications for an alcohol beverage operator's bartender license for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one. Before you this evening, are five applications being recommended for approval, and no for, none for denial.
Is there a motion to approve item seven A?
So moved.
Okay. First by Councilor Prushul, second by Councilor Blakely. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under item eight A, consideration of ordinance number thirty-six sixty-four to create section eighteen oh two sub fifteen sub Q of Code of General Ordinance of the City of Beloit, authorizing outdoor vending for an annual hockey event sponsored by Beloit Blue Line Club of Beloit. This is first reading.
Okay. Okay. Martin, can you come forward, please? And you're gonna present for the public, Public Works Director Williamson this evening? So will you give us a summary of the project?
Yes, Blue Line Club of Beloit. And may I say, the Blue Line Club also is the booster club for Beloit Memorial Hockey Program, a nonprofit organization sponsoring the twenty-eighth annual alumni hockey game at the Edward Sports and Activity Center on December twenty-one. Event organizers wish to have vending available at the event. Event is free and open to the public. Event organizers plan to sell beer and brats. All proceeds are used to fund future alumni games. Event, again, is free, and there are two games, one, the home time is scheduled at six-thirty, and the recent grant will begin at eight P.M.
Counselor, we have to take the motion first. Okay. So, this is the first reading. Is there a motion to lay this ordinance over?
So moved.
Okay, first by Councilor Prushul, second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacobson. Any discussion? And I believe we had a question or input from Councilor Corbeck.
I just want to know, how old do you have to be to be an old timer?
You can be any age. Any age.
Any other part of the discussion? Counselor Prushul, or any other?
No.
Okay. Okay. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good job.
So, about a year, we can't believe it, but we're back at the beginning already, so.
Seems so.
Super excited, I know, everybody got through their comments quickly to get to this presentation. So we started the process about... So we started the process about five months ago where we submitted CIP requests, and since that time, we went through all of those requests, met with all the department and division heads individually, went through each of the operating budgets line by line, and we are happy to present to you a balanced 2020 purpose budget. Just some of the summary items here, the budget overall with all funds is all-inclusive of about $98 million. That's a $1.16 million increase over the 2019 budget, roughly 1.2%. Much of that is right from the increase in the general fund, which you see in the next bullet point there, which is a total of roughly $33 million, 2.6% increase over the 19 budget. The enterprise funds as a whole increased by about $530,000, up to about $19.5 million collectively. So, this slide here is just a nice summary slide that highlights the major fund types, all in one line item. You can see many increases and decreases throughout the different fund types, which comes up to that 1.16 million in total. Some of the bigger increases there, of course, is the general fund that I just spoke about on the first slide, as well as the internal service funds budget, which is an increase of roughly about $1 million. We'll get into a little bit more detail on each of these fund types later on in the presentation, but this gives you just a nice summary of all of them in one slide to see the grand total. So, some of the budget highlights that are related simply to the staffing levels at the city. In 2019, we did fund a portion of the police inspector position. The idea of that was to try to get an idea of where we were throughout the year, to see if we were able to fund that or not. We were, so we budgeted one quarter of that position to be filled in 2019. And so then, of course, if you have that position filled in 19, you then need it fully filled in 2020, so we have added the full funding for that position in 2020. We were also able to find the funding to be able to refill the human resources analyst position that we had left vacant several years ago as a budget savings measure. We just weren't able to fund it until 2020, so I know that the human resources staff will be grateful to have that in there, and so will the rest of the employees and staff at the city. One of the other things that councillor Pruschel actually hit on earlier was the transit move to community development out of the public works department. So we had a shift in that responsibility from transit into community development, and in doing so, we have the community and housing services director who will now be the deputy community development director, and will then oversee both the housing and the transit divisions all collectively. So with some minor changes in some allocations to some other employees, we were able to save about $100,000 in the transit budget, as well as some savings as well in the general fund. Some of those shifts in allocations were to the CDBG fund as well. So some more personnel-type adjustments in the budget for 2020. We have a 2% cost of living adjustment that is budgeted, and we also increased the health insurance premiums by a total of 10%, and increased the employee contribution up to 10% as well. You can see there in the slide that in 2017, there was a zero contribution, went to 5% last year, 7.5% this year, and up to 10% next year. That is citywide through all employment bases, including the public safety unions and transit unions, so we're all on the same contribution rate. So some of the financial highlights that are also in the budget include the shared revenue and expenditure restraint. Those have remained flat for well over a decade now. We do not anticipate there being much change to those two programs. It seems like there's not much growth in those areas statewide, so we're just still happy that they aren't reducing it further than what it already is, so we're kind of a we'll take what we can get scenario. One thing that did change with Governor Evers' budget this year was a 10% increase in highway transportation aids, so that did have about $122,000 impact on our state highway aids, which was very helpful in balancing this budget. One of the new aids that we received this year was the personal property tax exemption aid. That was simply to reimburse the cities for the loss in the property tax revenue that they were not going to receive because they exempted some categories of personal property. So it was more or less a reimbursement for what we had lost. It did decrease part of the tax rate, so that's always good. But in this case, the aid payment did go down $75,000. The reason for that is because they changed the methodology in which they calculated the aid payment. Some of that aid payment also went to our TIF districts, and so when they reallocated the way that they changed the methodology, it actually took the revenue down in the general fund, but it did increase those payments in our TIF districts. So it's a more appropriate calculation, to be perfectly honest with you, so it's a good thing. Yeah, more or less, yeah. And we were then able to add that $75,000 back to the levy, so we didn't really lose the money, it's just kind of a shift in the way that they fund it. So net new construction did increase by about 0.13%, up to 1.23%. And then we did achieve an additional 1.038% due to the TID closure. So there's always some tax relief, and then there's always some general fund exposure there that we can then increase our levy. So we always try to take what the state allows us because there's very few opportunities for us to do that, so we will continue to take full advantage of that. The assessed and equalized values are increasing. There's a slide later that you'll see a nice graph that shows where we are with those and where we were. The 8.21% is the equalized value, that's the value that is provided to us by the state. The assessed values are what the local assessor assesses, so there's a lot more economic gain on the equalized value piece than there is on the assessed values, so you'll see that in the chart later, too. The municipal property tax levy did increase by about $480,000, roughly 3%. 150 of that was due to our debt service increasing. The one nice thing that the state did allow when they implemented levy limits is that they did exempt the general obligation debt. It is not restricted by the state imposed levy limit. So fees and charges, we do look at all of these every year. We need to try to make sure that we're doing our best to be able to recapture some of the cost of the programs that we're providing, and that's done through the user fees and services. The wastewater, or the water utility and wastewater, did have a proposed increase of 3%, strictly to try to continue to improve the infrastructure to be able to provide that service. Also, on the water side, there is not a proposed rate increase in 2020. However, we are gonna go out for a full rate study in 2020, which hopefully we'll be able to implement that by January of 2021. Again, the increases are really designed for us to be able to continue to put money into the infrastructure in those two utilities to be able to provide safe water and sewer services to the city. So we have here the general fund revenues by funding source. This is gonna detail out the $850,000 that we saw on the prior slides, and two of the items that particularly jump out at this time are the increase in the taxes, which is not just levy, it's also some of the other taxes that are imposed, and then the intergovernmental aid. The increase of the intergovernmental aid was solely designed, or solely the reason is because of TID's number six closure. There was some computer exemption aid that was paid to the TIF districts. When those TIF districts close, that aid then gets paid into the general fund of the municipality, so that's actually one of the differences between the personal property aid exemption and the computer aid, is that we do not get that money when the TID closes for the personal property aid. So it's kind of a bummer there, but we'll take what we can get. So the taxes are the other piece, most of that is the tax levy, and then all the other line items are kind of pretty benign, just increases and some minor decreases to make up the difference, to come up with the 2.67%. So here's a nice little pie chart graphical representation of where the funding sources come from. You know, as you can see, close to 60% of our general fund budget comes from state and federal aids. About 50% of that 59% actually comes from state shared revenue, so it's a pretty sizable number. Again, that's why I'm just thrilled that they don't continue to take that money away, or else we would be having to find other funding sources to make up for that revenue. So at this point, we'll take, we'll take what we can get.
Eric, is this about 60%, right? Is that what we just said?
Yeah.
Is that more or less, or has that sort of stayed the same as far as the percentage that it pays for our budget?
It's coming down a little bit because that aid payment has stayed status quo, but our budgets have grown. So the percentage-wise of state aids is actually coming down, but it's still exceptionally significant to what we need in the city.
City manager, Looser.
Thank you. One of the reasons why the City of Beloit receives more shared revenue, as an example, is because the formula, albeit created a number of years ago, takes into consideration the amount of assessed property value in the city. Our property values are significantly lower on average than other communities throughout the state, and so the cost of providing services really doesn't vary that much from community to community, but your ability to provide revenue streams does vary based on the values of your properties. That said, I understand some neighboring communities may have had questions about why Beloit receives so much more. Well, given that their property tax rates are substantially lower than ours are, I think that, you know, clearly, the amount of property value within each community is directly linked to all of those factors. So, you know, we always strive to keep our property taxes low, but in order to generate the same amount of revenue that's needed to provide services, the rate in and of itself has to be higher comparatively speaking. As our equalized assessed values rise, we can start to look at what that rate is, but to generate the same dollar in Beloit as compared to a neighboring community, it takes a higher rate.
Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Pruschel.
I just want to point out, in the budget book on page 47, I believe it is, there's a table that makes that comparison very clear, whether we stand in regards to other cities in the state, and it's quite a shocking number when you look at comparisons. And when you compare it on that kind of table, it becomes pretty obvious what's going on in there. I just want to point out, for those people who might want to read the budget book, call 456 pages. We're starting.
You can go ahead, Eric.
It'll be a test.
So this is then the expenditure side, so also making up the $850,000, and this is showing the increases and decreases by division or department. So many of them are some positives, some negatives, kind of offsetting each other. The two that particularly stand out on the increase side is the public safety side, the police department and the fire department. The police department, as I mentioned earlier, did have the full funding of the police inspector position, which of course then impacts the comparison from year to year on the budget side. Also included in both police and fire is the significant increase in the amount of resources that we have to designate to continue to pay the retiree health insurance. That fund had continuously been showing and decreasing, actually increasing a deficit balance, and so at some point, you have to then fund that deficit balance, and so this year, we're showing a significant increase in both of those departments to be able to help offset those deficits. To the tune of $415,000 in the police department is attributed just to the retiree health increase, and in the police, in the fire department, $255,000 is designated as an increase in what we're paying for the retiree health insurance. So those are pretty significant dollar amounts that we're having to fund those programs with, and so it just shows, you know, where those resources are going in order to continue to provide that level of service to them, so.
Is that the only two departments that have that?
Yes. Yep, that's it. Right, because of the contractual obligations that existed in the contracts, so, yep. And so to offset some of those other increases there, you can see the Department of Public Works has a pretty significant savings. That is actually just made up of a multitude of differing accounts that make up that amount. There are some larger type items, but there were some significant decreases in some utility payments, some vehicle maintenance payments, and our buildings and grounds budgets, so it was kind of a right sizing of some of those departments in terms of budgeting what we thought we could actually get done in the year, and so it created some savings there. And it was a good thing that we did because it ended up offsetting some of those other increases in the other departments. So again, the same style of graph that we saw with the revenues is here in the expenditure side. Public safety, very common across all communities in the state. You'll see right around that 60% to 65% of most general fund budgets is made up of public safety. We're right in that ballpark there at 63%. So nothing really out of the ordinary in terms of the way that we're allocating those resources to the different departments, very common across the state. Public Works is the next largest one at 18%. So is there any other questions on the general fund before I get into the other fund types? So special revenue funds, these are made up of our TIF districts. This would be our library and solid waste recycling programs. This actually showed a decrease of about $667,000. Again, common theme, TID closure, we don't have the revenue then from the increment anymore, so we did show a decrease of about $1.3 million in revenue. The offset to that then, of course, is the increase in the increment into number 10, which helped offset some of that loss. Remembering those are revenues that stay specifically in those districts, they're not used in general fund operations. And then, of course, the library, we did see a slight difference of $21,000 between both the blender and the library as a whole, their operations. Most of that was, as I noted there, due to the salary and benefit changes through some of the different staffing programs that they've done at the library, which created some of that savings. Enterprise funds are funds that are basically designed to be self-sufficient. These are ambulance, golf course, cemetery, and our utilities. This is about $530,000 of an increase, primarily due to the wastewater increase of that 3%. As I mentioned earlier, we did not have a water utility increase for 2020 projected, looking to do that in 2021. I did mention the reorg in the transit earlier, and it did save approximately $100,000. And then, of course, some small fee changes that we look at each year in terms of the golf course and cemetery funds. Golf course and transit are the only two enterprise funds that we still receive direct subsidy for. Transit is mostly due to the fact that we receive state and local, state and federal funds, and so we have to have a match for those funds, so that's a lot of what that is. So that's a lot of what that is. Internal service funds, these are funds that are supported through charges to all the other funds.
If I just wanted to get into the reasons?
Yeah, sure.
Is ambulance fund, is that launched, reset?
We have not used it, but our intent is to use it to purchase an ambulance. So we did an increase in the, the fees a couple of years ago, I think last year was when we first started it. We did not see the revenue growth in 2018 that we were anticipating, so we had taken out the funding to the vehicle replacement fund to offset those losses. 2019 is trending much better. And so our hope then is to have an ambulance appropriated for in 2020 so that we can see where we finish 2019 in hopes that that trend continues for '20, and then we'd have enough to, to fund an ambulance in '20. Okay, so yeah, the internal service funds, I, I mentioned this at the beginning of the slide, about a million dollar increase mainly due to the health insurance budgets. This is not only the retirees, but also the active plan. I did mention that we had increased those premiums by about 10%. So that's, that's really the basis for the increase in the, in the internal service funds. One of the positives that we've seen over the last two years has been the workers' comp premium contributions rate that continues to decline, that mod rate. It's well below one now, which used to be up at 1.22, meaning we were spending a 22% premium on every dollar for work comp. Now it's under one, so, yes?
I just wanted, can you define mod rate?
Sure. It, the mod rate is if you kind of look at an experience rate. So if you have several types of claims, then your mod rate goes up because you're using that program. If you're not, and you're kind of staying status quo, then you tend to pay a discount, very similar to any other type of insurance that you might purchase. Yep. So the debt service fund, it is what it sounds like. It's the fund that we use to pay our general obligation debt service. We do have existing outstanding debt in our utilities, but those pay directly from the utility, not through the debt service fund. We did see a slight decline in the overall general obligation debt that's due by $32,000. However, the funding source of that debt is mostly, or not mostly, yeah, it is mostly, actually increased than $150,000 through the tax levy. So the TIF districts that closed, utilities that expended their debt or extinguished their debt, has gone away. So we have to then be able to pay that through other sources, that's on the tax levy. The proposed capital funds, these are made up of the CIP engineering, the general capital improvement plan, vehicle replacement funds, and so forth. You can see that the actual capital plan itself basically stayed the same from last year to this year. It was just a slight decrease of $81,000. Pretty modest when you're talking about a $10 million roughly, a capital improvement plan, so pretty good there. The funding source for the CIP is geodet and notes, notes and bonds, I mean, fund balance, equipment funds, some special assessments, and then just other funding sources, federal state aids and so forth. The projects are comprised of 6.4 million in infrastructure, 1.4 in capital equipment, 1.1 in buildings and grounds, and then 250 in the economic development areas. So most of the decrease in the funds, that 560,000 is because we did not put in a proposal to replace as many vehicles as we normally do. So that's really the big difference there. So any questions on the funds before I talk about the tax levy? No? Okay, thank you. So according to the, the slide in front of you, we see a slight decline of one cent per thousand dollars of assessed value. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but it's still a decrease. And it's really what we're trying to accomplish when we, you know, close those TIF districts and try to be fiscally responsible to, you know, the citizens in terms of the tax rate. We like to keep that rate going down as well, you know, from a comparable standpoint. So the overall tax levy did increase by 482,000, 150 of that is the debt service, we have to pay back the money that we borrow. And then the general fund, which is the, the net new construction numbers that we talked about. So that was the amount of the capacity that we could possibly increase our levy by. When you think about the overall expenditures of the general fund, and we're having to be constricted and limited to 330,000, it, it makes it a daunting task. Exactly. Trying to keep the lights on, you know, and here is not easy to do. So, thank you. Yeah, that was not planned.
It's magic.
It is, telling you. So, so you can see the increase is 3.08%, the increase in the assessed values was 2.25%. Those are subject still to change. We do not have final numbers yet from the state, so there could be a slight impact in the tax rate. If any of the assessed values increase or decrease, it will have an impact on that rate. So we're hopeful that some of the things that we're working on will not impact it by that much, but we'll see what we can do. Okay, so here's the graph I was talking about earlier in the presentation where you can see the rates started to increase, and then for the last two years, we've seen a nice decline in where we were just two years ago. You know, when you think about over the last four years, we've only increased that tax rate by 31 cents per thousand, that's pretty good. You know, I, I would say that you don't see a lot of communities that are only raising it by that amount of, of dollars per thousand. So 31 cents over the last four years isn't, isn't too bad. So here's the assessed value and equalized values chart. The, you see that big jump in 2019. Again, the equalized values do come directly from the state. There was a lot of economic impact, is what it's called, when the state applies that to many of the different types of property that we have. And we had a pretty big jump in our commercial properties, as well as some of our residential properties. So the, the issue is they tend to capture that a lot sooner than we can. That's why you're starting to see that discrepancy between the assessed value and the equalized value. The only thing that's really going to make that more level is when we do a complete revale of all the properties in the city. That's a pretty big undertaking. We are currently in the process of trying to fix that, but in order to do that, we need to get a new assessment software, which we are in the selection phase of that. Then we have to implement it, takes about a year, then you need to run it for about a year. So realistically, we're probably looking at a revale closer to 2022. So it's still going to be a little bit before we can really catch up on those rates. But in any event, we are seeing some nice growth in the assessed values. A lot of that is based on market condition of sale properties that are still happening in the city. So very positive signs here on the equalized and, and assessed value side.
Any questions? Mark, Council Pressel, go ahead.
Well, Eric's mentioned this in the past in budget discussions, and I'm just going to reiterate it, but you've said before, there's not a two-year time period of catching up to this value. Is that what we're seeing, like, we're seeing year one of a two-year process to catch up to that, or is it before, we just, before that even? Because we, because I know there's, the state's got this, and then we have the assessments that come up later for that hit now, 2021 would be the next time you would see any impact of that.
Um, yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, kind, kind of. Um, the state, how they, how they come up with their amount that they want to increase the values by is based on the data that is provided to them by us. So through sales data of homes and commercial properties and new home sales, new, uh, new builds, permit data. So they gather all of that information, they take a look at those increases or decreases, depending on the, the year that you're having, and then they try to apply some logic to all of the properties. They're not coming out and assessing all the properties on an annual basis either. So they're using the data that we provide to apply it to the equalized values. So they're able to just uniformly apply those, whereas we can't. The only way we're going to be able to is if we literally go and do like, a drive, you know, through, looking at each property. We assess the ones that typically have sold, built, changed, that's where the permit data comes in.
Okay.
So we're doing what's called a maintenance assessment each year, and so those maintenance assessments just don't keep up with the equalized value, so.
The reason I ask was simply because people see all the development that's going on, and wondering when it's going to help our property values, our value, our valuations, and then we're going to see it, you know, improve, you know, some kind of change from that. And I know it's, you know, something that was two years ago is still coming, we're not there yet.
It, it takes time.
And see where we're at, and I didn't know if it was beginning to see that here, or if it's still coming, so.
Eric, can I say something?
Yeah.
So what we're seeing with the sales sometimes in our target neighborhoods is that houses are selling for more than assessed value. And like Eric was saying, we can't go in and then and say, oh, well, that whole neighborhood should be increased.
Right.
And so I think it's starting to happen, but it's not showing in our numbers yet.
Right. And one of the things that does help is there are a lot of sales that have occurred over the last couple of years, I mean, a lot. So that's why we are seeing the appreciation from '17 to '19, you know, of over $45 million of assessed value. A lot of that has to do with the residential community, you know, of the home sales and so forth. There is new construction as well.
City manager, Looser, you have something to add?
Thank you. I think we have two issues that we're talking about, they're interrelated but different. One is the difference that both our finance director and our community development director have referred to in the difference between the assessed and the equalized. But the other issue I think you're getting to, if I'm correct, Councilor Pressel, is that as development occurs, we don't gain the value of those new developments until it, it's a bit in arrears.
Yeah.
So as of January 1st, what is built is then assessed. And then that would go into what would become, if it was built as of January 1st of 2019, that actually wouldn't hit the tax rolls until 2020. And so you are in arrears that way. So a project that perhaps is started but not completed this fall and even come January 1st, we won't see the full tax benefit of that improvement until 2021.
Right. Yeah, that was what I was wondering.
I thought you were asking about something.
If this was the same as that, and I didn't know if it was.
They're related but different.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying there. Councilor Jacobson.
Yeah, and Eric, just so I'm clear, if we were to extend this, you know, back even further, we're not really prone to the pattern of it increasing. So for us to speculate, you know, we're talking about how it hits the tax base, but we don't have a history of ever increasing over time, generally in the last.
Yeah, if you, if you would actually see this graph, like, like you're saying, a 10-year.
Yeah.
We, we took a hit during the Great Recession.
Sure.
And so one of the benefits to that is that we don't see the huge dips when those recessions hit, but we also don't see the increases when you come out of those recessions. So like Councilor Jacobson said, you, you see a very kind of status quo type unless you have a, a major type of economic development project or something that may increase the tax base.
Any other questions? Councilors? Go ahead.
So the next steps, we do have a council workshop scheduled for next Monday at the library. You've all been there before. So that starts at 10:00 AM in the community room. It's projected to go until about 3:00. So it definitely gives you each an opportunity to ask, you know, as many questions and really bet out the budget at that time, so that you're able to be able to leave there and understand that you're comfortable with what we're, we're bringing forward. So that really is a great opportunity to, to get your questions answered. The next step then after that is two weeks from tonight, a public hearing at 7:00. And then two weeks after that, it will be on your agenda for your consideration for adoption of the number four. That is everything that I have for you tonight. I'd be certainly more than happy to continue to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Are there any other, council, do they have any questions or comments at this time? Councilor Pressel, first.
As always, Eric, I'm very impressed with your presentations and the way you make this so easy to read, that nice budget book.
Thank you.
Did you ever have it compared to Jan Air's before?
I did not, no.
I, I made that comment. I said, it kind of reads like Jan Air.
Nice. I'll pass that along to Jessica.
Somebody said it was like Warfees, I said, no, it's like Jan Air.
Thank you, Council Pressel. Councilor Jacobson.
I just want to thank staff for bringing us a balanced budget, which we appreciate your philosophy on not dipping into any of our reserve funds. And I know it's not easy, there is a slight increase of like $300,000, which is, you know, pennies with a $90 million, $97 million budget. So thank you, that makes our job easier next week, and even as I read through this very, very long detailed document, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add and just say thank you to all the staff for all their hard work, and we're looking forward to going further and in more detail.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Item 12.
Okay, the city will adjourn in closed session in the blue conference room per section 1985 of 100 of the statutes to discuss a possible agreement between the town of Beloit and the city of Beloit and the provision of water and sewer services, potential assignment of the lease of Beloit Professional Baseball Association, potential sale of the property at 656 Pleasant Street, and a potential development agreement for the property at 1255 Gateway Boulevard, 3190 Colley, 3230 Colley, and 3310 Colley Road. And the city council may adjourn back into open session afterwards.
Okay, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I saw move.
First by Council Forbet, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Council Pressel, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're in closed session, and we'll be moving to the blue conference room.
Okay. The first resolution coming on a closed session is Resolution 2019-148. It's a resolution approving the assignment and assumption of lease for Harriet C. Coleman Field.
Okay, city manager, Looser.
Thank you. The current lease between the city and Beloit Professional Baseball Association requires any assignment to be approved by the city. However, consent to the assignment cannot be unreasonably withheld. This assignment, as recommended, would take place upon the final closing of the sale of the Snappers franchise to Gateway Professional Baseball LLC. The document allows for that assignment. Council President Duncan, would you entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-148 at this time?
Is there a motion at this time?
I saw move.
Okay. Which one was it? I think I heard. Was it, I know it was Council Pressel, and then the second by Council Forbet? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that said, motion carries.
The second item coming on a closed session is Resolution Number 2019-149, which is a resolution approving a development agreement between the city of Beloit and Seafried Industrial Properties, Inc.
Good evening. I'm actually here this evening in my capacity as the executive director for the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation. Earlier this evening, the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation approved a real estate contract of sale with Seafried Industrial Properties. Seafried plans to purchase approximately 80 acres of the Gateway Business Park. The proposed site involves a combination of four existing parcels that are located on Gateway Boulevard in North of Cowell Road. Seafried is a national business development company based in Atlanta, Georgia, that has extensive experience in developing large-scale industrial projects. The proposed site, Seafried intends to construct a warehouse distribution facility of approximately 1 million square feet. The GPEDC is conveying the site to the developer for a dollar an acre, net cost of $8.08 due to the extensive economic. to the extensive economic impact this project will have on the greater Beloit community. The agreement also includes a repurchase agreement that allows the GBEDC to repurchase the property if Seafried does not build a building within five years. The agreement allows for 180 days of due diligence, during which the developer can access the site and begin work. However, any on-site work conducted prior to closing will be done at their own risk, and if the development project is not fully developed, Seafried will restore the site to its original conditions. Creating what could begin as early as next week, October 15. And Seafried's goal is to deliver the completed building to the proposed user by September 30th of 2020. With that background, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager for some additional comments on the development agreement, which is actually before you tonight. And I'll be around to insert any additional questions. Thank you.
While GBEDC did agree to sell the land for a dollar an acre, there are no city subsidies to support this project. The proposed development agreement provides a guarantee to the city that Seafried, for its asset need, shall construct and install any traffic control or off-site infrastructure improvements that may be required as a result of a traffic study that is currently underway. The development agreement also provides language that has been permitted for other projects in the Gateway Business Park to allow the contractor the ability to work between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 11:30 p.m. rather than the usual hours of 7:00 to 10:00 for limited periods of time only. Ladies and gentlemen, I am at liberty to share with you on this isolated occasion prior to closing that the anticipated tenant for this project is Amazon. Additional information will be available upon closing, and should the final stages of the process prove successful, a public announcement would occur at the time of closing. That could be as early as 30 days or at the end of the 180-day period, again, if the project ultimately moves forward. Our Director of Strategic Communications will be sending out a statement in regard to the developments and land purchase agreements. This will serve as the city's communication piece until after closing. It will be posted on social media and on the city's website. Staff, nor our elected officials, nor individuals from Seafried or the tenants will be available to answer any questions or provide additional details until closing. This concludes the information that Andrew and I are able to provide at this time. Counsel President Duncan, a motion to consider the proposed Resolution 2019-149, approving a development agreement between the City of Beloit and Seafried Industrial Properties, would now be in order.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Vice President Anderson, second by Counsel Jacobson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that said, we are now going to need a motion to go into adjournment. Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Okay, Counsel Forbet, seconded by Counsel Prushil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now adjourned.